Okay, we reconvened workshop session. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item number one for us, please?
Black lot parking garage.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Today you get me for two of the presentations, which is not typical. And then the third presentation will be done by our economic development director, Jesse Peterson. And here today we're to talk, discuss in more detail, an action that will be coming in front of the council, potentially on December 12th, depending on consensus from the council, regarding the construction of a public parking garage to be located in what we refer to as the black lot, which is a city-owned parking lot of 4,001 existing surface spaces that were part of the settlement agreement the city entered into with the Arizona Cardinals and the, and the AZDA, which owns the State Farm Stadium. So today I want to walk you through kind of the components. Anytime if you've got questions or if I've not been real clear, please feel free to, to stop and we'll try to get those questions answered. So I want to jump ahead. So the, in, in the overview would be, first of all, the construction of the, of this public garage would be 100% owned by the city of Glendale. And what it will do is, i- if, if constructed as envisioned, it will provide for an additional 3,063 parking spaces in a parking garage that is constructed over the surface lot of some of the spaces in the black lot. So when you, when you combine the 3,063 vertical spaces with the 744 at-grade spaces, it then gets you to roughly, you know, 3,900 spaces all total in the garage. The, um, the construction of this garage will continue to honor the contractual obligations to provide 4,001 spaces at grade to the Arizona Cardinals and to AZDA. In other words, we have a contractual obligation that on NFL events or any stadium event that meets what they call mega event status, which is events 40,000 or more, the city has agreed to make sure that we provide 4,001 spaces within the geographical location of what we refer to as the black lot. This will not disrupt that, the ability to do that. But it also will provide additional parking capacity for large-scale events in the area, including those in, uh, events that are envisioned within the Vi Resort. And so this will allow additional capacity. As you know, the Vi Resort has grown considerably since early 2020, when the first project was made public. It will now be close to 1,100 rooms. It will be the largest, the state's largest resort property in the state of Arizona. But they've also expanded a, a number of areas. They've added in, for example, 70,000 square feet of conference space, which was not envisioned originally. Uh, the Mattel Adventure Park has expanded. They've gone from originally around 65,000 square feet to where the indoor facility will be closer to 150,000 square feet. So all of these things have, have driven the fact that there will be more people attending the entertainment district and going to the Vi Resort. This will provide additional public parking over and above what's available within the property itself. It also will provide, which we'll get into, it will provide, we believe, a, a long-term revenue stream to the city of Glendale. The, uh, the, the way we will deliver the, the project is through a design-build contractor of Fisher Industries. And this would be procured using Title 34 and staying consistent with how large contracts of this manner are, uh, are procured by local government. The price of the garage will come in at a guaranteed maximum price of $71,850,000. Now, this includes all design work, permit, site work, landscaping, and off-site traffic improvement. So this would be an all-in construction price of $71,850,000. And the general contractor, our design-build contractor, will absorb any losses that, that exceed the $71,850,000. So we'll have assurance with terms of the, the construction of this, um, project and not to expect to come back with the manager saying, "We need to have more money because we've had estimations." So I think this number is significant because we entered into an MOU with the, with the resort to contemplate a parking garage over a year ago. And since that time, we've seen significant increase in the cost of things like steel and concrete, which are, make up primarily a large, uh, construction project. The fact that we're still tracking to the same number, we think, is also, and needs, should be called out. The, um, from a construction standpoint, assuming the council moves forward with the appropriate, um, contracts, is that the, uh, they'll be ready, the contract will be ready to mobilize on the black lot starting in, on January 8th of next year. And that during the timeframe from January 8th through March 29th, the work that will be done onsite, they will fence off the, the available area that will make up the construction site. And they will begin their site work, the grading, uh, which includes the removal of all the existing asphalt that's there. They'll work on utility relocation, asphalt removal, caissons, which are your foundational elements, and other foundational work. That will be taking place from January 8th through March 29th. As you recall, we have, of course, the final four coming to our community in early April. So the construction will take a pause, uh, leading up to the final four. And then, once it's completed, starting on the week of April 10th, construction will then ramp up. And between April 10th and September 6th, this is when we'll see the assembly of the pre-cast components that make up a substantial part of the, uh, project. On September 6th, the use of the 720 spaces below the garage will be available because the cart, the NFL football season typically starts around that area. So we'll make sure that even though the garage may not be 100% complete, the access to the parking to meet our financial obligations and our, our contractual obligations to the Cardinals will be met. Then we envision that the final, uh, closeout of the project will be approximately November 15th. Uh, this is when the, the remaining landscaping and, and signage, wayfinding, elevators, lighting, all of that would be completed. The total project schedule is, is 302 days. So the source of funding for the project will be as follows. Currently in our FY 24, 23, 24 budget, the council has set aside $16 million in reserve balance. Um, and we would envision that that money would be expended on the project between January 15th and June 1st. The remaining balance of the $55,600,000 will be paid to the general contractor between July 1st until the project is closed out in November. Uh, and just as an additional note, the city is waiving up to $250,000 for permit, uh, costs for this project. The, 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 the garage itself is primarily a concrete and steel garage. Uh, they, the design is one that should have lasting functionality. Um, so for example, um, if you think about our garage at City Hall, it's a painted surface, which obviously has to be addressed, uh, over time through repainting and those items. In this particular case, all of the fascia and the, and kind of the structural components and the visual components of the garage on the external side will have the paint pigmentation into the actual casting of the concrete. And so, uh, at most, over time, as our Arizona dust and, and weather kind of affects all of our buildings, really to keep it looking pristine will really require nothing more than a fairly light, uh, power wash versus having to go in every 10 or 12 years and address it through a repainting of the garage. The, um, Fisher Industries is a fully vertically integrated contractor and, um, has, has demonstrated that they have the ability to manage through the supply chain issues. Um, for example, cement has been a really large challenge here in Arizona. A lot of it because of the large semiconductor plant being constructed north, uh, in North Phoenix. Uh, but as an example, they have their own cement batch plant literally across the street from the garage location. And so they are very confident that they'll be able to maintain the supply chain issues and keep this project to the 302 days. And so just to kind of give you, um, a little bit of the lay of the land. So this is the existing, uh, black lot in the southwest corner of the black lot. The light tan area is the retention basin. So, uh, all along Montebello, and Montebello is the street, uh, very, you know, to the south of the, of the slide. All along Montebello, we, the city has, uh, for about, in the improved areas, retention that will handle all the water from the black lot. So in, as part of this project, we looked at, it's kind of, uh, I don't want to say wasted space, but it's not highly utilized space. So what the, um, so the first thing they're going to do is they're going to take the existing asphalt that is currently striped in part of the project, and they're going to mill that down and move it. Now, our thought will be is they will move it to the city's unimproved portion of the block lot, which is on the northeast corner. Basically, if you can think of Cardinals Way and 91st Avenue, that corner is unimproved. It's just, it's strictly raw land. So as part of the project, they will take the asphalt from the footprint area of the project. They will mill it and then transport it to the city-owned site. They will then, the, the millings are such that you can roll them out with a large, uh, with, uh, a, a large steamroller. Uh, it's probably not steam, but a large roller. And then it's even to the point to where you can come in and stripe. And so it makes for a temporary location that should get us by, uh, more than ample during the construction timeline. We can then fulfill all of our parking obligations, remembering that we have the final four here in April. And so we'll be able to replace the 720 parking spaces, 740 parking spaces being consumed by the construction to that corner of our self-improved lot, or, uh, our, our own lot. The, um, here's just some technical data kind of on the, on, on the, uh, the current asphalt. It's, we have four inches that are there. Uh, all total, being milled on this project, is about 3,500 tons. And, and that will give us a two-inch covering as a temporary parking lot on city-owned land. So then this starts showing you now kind of the footprint for the garage. So if you can look down now at the lower, uh, left-hand corner of the slide, you can see that the parking garage now covers a portion of the retention basin that paralleled along Montebello. So the in, city engineers have looked at this and we, we have, we'll be able to engineer this such that the city still has ample capacity to handle all the required stormwater on that site. But we, we can build out over this portion, which then makes that land really more valuable. And it reduces the amount of area that we're impacting in the existing 4,000 lot. So that's going to be down in the lower, in the lower corner. And, um, and so then, uh, this again is another, kind of gives you another, um, shot of the layout and starts talking about circulation, about how we'll move cars in and out. This is the most current rendering. We're still refining, uh, this. But I'll show you a couple of different, um, views of the garage. Um, again, this is, um, uh, different elements. You can see that what we have is it's four elevated floors with a ground-level floor. Um, so I think that the, approximately the total height from above ground is roughly around 52 feet, um, in height. And one of the really important components of this is that the resort will be building a pedestrian bridge across 95th Avenue that will connect directly into the garage. So we will give them an, an easement to connect to our garage. They are paying for the bridge at, at their cost. But it allows people coming to concerts or, uh, to events at the resort not to have to cross 95th Avenue, um, but they can, they'll do it through an elevated, um, uh, walkway. So this is kind of a description showing you looking to the west of the, um, of how that will connect in. Again, we've looked at the circulation. So I want to explain this particular slide to you. So you can see at the, almost the midpoint of the garage, you see kind of two arrows in, two arrows out of the garage. When you enter into the parking garage using this access point, you are immediately taken up a ramp and taken to the second floor. So when you come in this entrance, you cannot access any of the surface lots, spaces. So it's what they call a speed ramp. It's a wide ramp that really is ideal for unloading and loading a garage in the most efficient manner when everybody's leaving at the same time. Now, if you look a little bit to the north and east of the slide, you see another entrance point. And you see two, a, a single arrow in and a single arrow out. What that is for is if people are wanting to park under the garage at the surface level, this is where they, this is where they will enter in to access those spaces. When you enter in on these spaces, you have no ability to get to the elevated spaces. This allows us through the design process to segregate the parking needs. Because if you recall, we have to provide 700, a part of the spaces underneath this, um, garage as part of our obligations to the Arizona Cardinals and to AZDA. So in that particular case, we will, traffic will set up hard barrier, hard barricades. And fans arriving to attend an NFL or stadium event will enter in and be, and be directed to the northerly entrance rate. And that'll give them access to the surface lots. Meanwhile, any of the guests coming that are hotel guests, coming to the restaurant, coming to the events to see the Mattel Adventure Park, they will enter at the midpoint and they will be taken immediately up to the upper levels. And so this is a, really been a very creative and ingenious design to make sure that we, at all times, can honor our responsibilities, uh, for our parking agreements, at the same time, make it really simple operationally at which to do. Um, again, this is just a view kind of at the, at the top level of the garage. Uh, there, there will be elevators here. Um, the staircases will all be 100% cast, uh, staircases. Uh, oddly enough, uh, parking garage staircases are one of the first things that need to get repaired typically. But these are going to be 100% cast and cement. So again, they should have, uh, from a maintenance standpoint, uh, should not need any additional, uh, help along the way. Um, again, they're going, we're still working on the final design of the, um, articulation uh, and the panels that will be going on the, the front of the, of the garage. But we're just kind of showing you here some other types of garages and some opportunities as we look at our design to be able to incorporate those. And again, it's kind of hard to see on this particular slide. But you can see that the, uh, the, on the right-hand side is the concrete with the pigmentation and the articulation of the product has been embedded in the actual cement itself. And then that gives you the ability to have a far more, uh, uh, functional, aesthetically pleasing, and more importantly, uh, a, a, a more durable exterior surface that will lower down operating costs over the years. And so I'll pause here. So that's the, that's the envisioned, uh, parking garage. And we'll be glad to, uh, answer any questions. And then what will follow this will be an operating agreement that will address some of the financial, uh, questions that you may have.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item two.
Black lot parking garage, operating plan.
So, assuming that the parking garage is constructed, um, we, staff has recommended and was envisioned in the MOU that the city entered into last year is that the, uh, the, the resort across the street would be, would do the day-to-day operations of the garage. Um, and so I want to walk you through what this agreement would look like and hopefully be able to answer any questions or concerns or thoughts you may have on it. The, the first thing that, that happens here is, uh, just to kind of, um, I went too far, excuse me. So the, first of all, again, this garage continues to be owned by the city of Glendale. So this operating agreement doesn't change the ownership, um, of the garage. It, again, it still provides the garage itself, the 3,063 spaces we talked about previously. It continues to maintain our contractual obligations. And, um, and it provides additional parking for large-scale events. The reason we repeated this information is just because these are public documents. And we wanted to make sure that if, if the public had a request for these documents, that it would make sense of what we're talking about. The purpose of the agreement is that it will assign responsibility for operating and maintaining the parking garage on behalf of the city. And it also establishes responsibility for both the operator and the city for how capital repairs will be addressed for the parking garage during the term of the lease. The initial lease that we're proposing is for 25 years. And we'll have two 10-year extensions, uh, built into the agreement. It establishes responsibilities, again, for the day-to-day operation. So we would envision that the Vi Resort will be responsible for the hiring of staffing, the cleaning, the maintaining, paying utility bills, emptying trash, uh, making repairs. That this would be a responsibility that would fall to them. Real important, the agreement will require them to manage the garage in a way that's consistent with the existing parking agreements that we've entered into, uh, with both the AZDA and the Arizona Cardinals. And so that includes a number of different elements. First of all, a recognition that on any NFL event or any mega event for the stadium, that there always has to be a minimum of 4,001 surface parking spaces accessible for the use of those events. Second, it will pro, uh, there'll be a prohibition on the sale of concessions, which includes both merchandise and food and beverage during qualified stadium event days. And when I say qualified stadium event dates, that includes Cardinal events and other, uh, events that are the mega events for the stadium. So if you recall with the Cardinals, uh, as an example, we don't allow people to set up on the city parking and sell team jerseys or to sell hot dogs or to sell additional concessions. So the agreement will call out the fact that, that things like concession sales will be prohibited, um, on the, on any of the lots, spaces assigned, um, during the, uh, during the event. And that includes the elevated parking garage. So our, 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 our prohibition says that we won't allow concessions on any property the city owns within a certain radius. So even the prohibition of concessions and food and beverage will extend also to all four levels of the parking garage. Also prohibits advertising, and that, again, exists for the entire garage as well. And it will also prohibit access to, um, to the attendees of stadium events. So from a business model, the Arizona Cardinals have a system of selling tickets to their fans that can include parking. So we've agreed not to compete, uh, with, um, with, uh, offering spaces to the fans that could be a lesser cost than perhaps what the team feels they want to charge. So that's why I went back to that initial design in the previous presentation, which talked in a lot of detail about how we segregated out the spaces for the stadium events versus for the Vi events or the other public events, uh, so we can make that very simple at which to do. The, the next thing that the agreement would do is it establishes a process for the setting of all parking fees. What we've talked about is what we call dynamic parking. So rather than posting a singular price, $10 per day or $4 per hour, is that we will work with the operator to maximize the revenue opportunities, which means that on, uh, let's say they have a major concert taking place that the parking rate may be for that day, may just be, uh, for the entire day, maybe $50 versus a $10 parking if it was just a Monday through Friday kind of event. So dynamic parking rates will allow us to adjust those fees in a manner which maximizes revenue back to the city, which then, of course, benefits our taxpayers. In the first five, five years of, um, uh, of the, um, agreement, uh, the city will retain the ability to commit up to 2,000 of the spaces to help attract future Super Bowls, Final Fours, or World Cup events. And so we want to make sure that we continue to be competitive as we go after, uh, these other large super mega events. And by being able to have additional 2,000 parking spaces available, this does not include the 700 spaces below it, we think really puts us in a far more competitive, uh, situation. The parking revenues that, including, uh, for this, will include all the revenues collected from the garage and then any kind of extra revenue. So for example, somebody may choose, and I, I'm just projecting forward, they want to do an art show on one of the floors of the garage because it's covered and it can accommodate 200 or 300 vendors and they've got parking. If, if we rent that out for that type of use or for anything that's not necessarily parking, but for some other kind of rental use, that revenue would, would be part of the overall revenue distribution and could not be segregated out. During the first five years of the agreement, the operator, uh, will pay for 100% of the cost of maintaining and operating the garage. Uh, they'll be responsible for collecting all the required local taxes and distribute that as required to the city of Glendale. And during that period of time, during the first five years, the operator will retain 100% of all the revenue collected. Starting in year six, the, there will be a distribution of, of net revenue as follows. The net, uh, revenue, and we define net revenue, it'll be the total parking revenues and event revenues less taxes, less any of the operating and maintenance expenses that are there. And so the, um, so the revenue then would be split as follows. The operator will retain 77.5% of the net revenue and the city would get 22.5%. So years six through 25, and in any extension periods, we would distribute net revenues a- along that particular formula. Now additionally, is the agreement will require the establishment of a capital repair account. Here in the city of Glendale, as you know, we have a 10-year CIP, which identifies major capital improvements so we can plan in advance for what typically can be expensive repairs or replacement of items that have, have, uh, met their useful life. What we, what this agreement would do is we ask the operator to participate in establishing an approved capital improvement plan, uh, which would be a 10-year plan. And then in the agreement, it, let's say we need in year 20, we have to replace one of the elevator banks. And it's a, say a cost of $200,000. Then the operator will cover 77.5% of that capital repair and the city would contribute 22.5. Very unusual from my perspective to have a publicly-owned asset that has the private sector willing to step in and to pay for capital repairs, um, as a, in a shared relationship. So again, that ratio of 77.5%, 22.5%, not only does it apply to the, to the distribution of net operating revenue, but it also applies to the responsibility to maintain this garage in a way that meets the standards that the city of Glendale knows that our citizens, uh, would, would want to have. The, the agreement also establishes a financial contribution by the operator. And so the, uh, so the way this is going to work is that the fees paid to the city essentially establishes a right of the operator to retain a portion of the revenues during the lease of the period. So when I said a minute ago that the operator would get 27, or excuse me, 72.5% of the net revenue- net revenue, that right comes from the fact that they're going to pre, uh, pre-invest in the, uh, in the agreement, um, and then it will take them a period of years upon years to re, to really to get that back. So the amount that we're asking the operator to give to the city of Glendale to have the right of the 27.5 or the 72.5% net revenue is they will pay us $58 million. $16 million of that will be paid during our current budget year, which would be sometime between now and June 30th. And then 42 million, uh, will be, uh, will be paid to the city, uh, between July 1st and when we complete the project through the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. So we'll still, we're, we're still working on the exact payment schedule for this, um, but what we will do is we will require this amount of money, the $58 million, to either be put into escrow at the time the agreement is entered into, or they will provide a performance bond that will guarantee that we don't get halfway through the construction and they decide they don't want to be the operator for the garage. So, um, so this again protects the city in the event that something that we haven't anticipated to date takes place. The, um, the schedule to be negotiated, uh, again, will reflect, will be reflected in our FY 24-25 budget. So in the coming months, we're starting the, the drafting of our new budget for next year. We'll make sure that this amount of revenue is reflected in our FY 24-25. So it'd be 42 million would be reflected in that particular budget. So let's go through just some projections of what this looks like, um, and, and why, uh, the, the city manager's team is really excited about this proposal. So one, we've worked with the resort to come up with some projected, uh, revenues, um, based on their activity that they're seeing will take place at the, um, at the, at the resort. So first of all, you see the daily fee and they're, they're projecting that the daily fee to park all day long in the garage will be $20 and they're anticipating that would be 1,140 spaces on a daily average. Again, we have, we have almost 4,000 to be able to use, but they're projecting use of 1,140 as a normal business. Now, if you remember, part of their business model is that people living in the area, they don't have to stay in the hotel in which to access the Mattel Adventure Park, to access the almost five-acre swimming, uh, facility that's being crafted. They don't have to access it to, you know, to really to get onto site. So what we see here is roughly, they're projecting on a daily basis, because they're open 365 days, that they will average $20 per vehicle and average 1,140 cars. That adds up to, uh, a gross revenue of 8,322,000. And then this is where we get into the dynamic parking model that I referenced earlier. They are also projecting that they are going to do 75 events a, a year of a large, of a larger magnitude. This would be the ones that would be filling up their amphitheater and their larger venue, which can accommodate nine, 10, 11,000 people. So what they've said is that they're anticipating that on event night, on a concert night, if they have an act coming in and they would charge $50 to park in the garage because of the, the demand. If you times that, times the 75 events, they've estimated 2,500 cars. So even then it's not 100% sold out. We think this is pretty conservative. That generates 9,375,000. Now the next item, it will take a little bit of explaining, is go back up to the daily fee. You will have guests coming, uh, to park, not at a concert, but just daily fee that may want to attend. I, I think they've got eight or nine restaurants that are there. They've got the Barbie Theater being constructed. They had the Mattel Adventure Park and they may want to go there. And so the model is you don't want to have people pay for parking and then go spend money, uh, because really the real goal is to get them to spend money on the site. So what we've, what we've envisioned happening is this, on that $20, uh, amount, if it gets validated by the restaurant, so they've gone in and they've spent a certain amount of threshold money for either at the adventure park or on merchandise or on restaurant, they would get their $20 parking fee validated. So they would not have to pay parking. And then the resort will reimburse the fund at a rate of $5 per vehicle. So then if you look at the 3,832, and I believe this number, I think we've been working through a whole series of numbers, um, no, that is, that is a correct number. So then that means we're going to be getting a credit back, giving a credit to the valet, all the validated, uh, parking spaces. That equals 3,832,000 so that the net revenue in this example is 13,864,500. So that's how, that would, but how, how we would define that. It's a dynamic parking model. There is a credit given for validation that will be all defined out. And so then we would work on the gross of the 13,8. Then the expenses get reduced and these will be actual expenses. So we will, they will present invoices, so they will, you know, they won't, you know, uh, we'll project our budget, but it will be based on actual expenses. That includes things like credit card fees. Today, we're primarily in a touchless environment for parking, uh, transactions. So we would, we've built in a 3% credit card fee based on the gross revenue that we see the, uh, happening in the garage. Um, they'll have to hire on the, those 75 nights for, uh, large concerts, they'll have to hire additional traffic control, uh, people and bring in people for customer service to make sure they route people correctly from the garage to the venue. Um, they'll have security that will be there. Um, we'll have security vehicles so we can move around the, you know, the area. Uh, it would include, um, an annual maintenance and the industry standard's about $300 per stall for an elevated garage. This includes occasional power watching to get rid of grease stains, uh, repair of, of, you know, if any kind of damage done by graffiti or whatever. Uh, so that's included. There's a general administration and what that is, is that would be including all the utilities, uh, the insurance, the, uh, and also includes any kind of supervisory labor. So we are projecting that to be, uh, roughly 3,142,000. Councilmember Tomachoff, I, you look like you may have a question, so.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor May, so, uh, Mr. Phelps, you lost me on the validation credit. I'm a little confused on the math there. So the $15 credit goes to the, to the person who's parking their car and $5 goes to the garage, right?
Yes.
And then so that, so that, and I, I would, uh, oh, I didn't, you, so you need to multiply it by the number of cars. I think that's, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but we'll tighten that down. I want to double check because we had a lot of changes, uh, Councilmember Tomachoff, just in the last 24 hours, but we'll confirm the numbers there, but I believe those to be relatively close.
Okay, thank you.
So, so then if we look at, so we have net revenues or expenses, excuse me, of the 3,100,000. So then what it shows is, is that the, the net revenue, revenue in, expenses out would, and starting in year six, would be 10,722,315. And then the city's share of that, the 22.5% share is what it would equal 2,412,521. So this is the amount that we would start getting in year six that would go through, all the way through year 25. Um, and then if we have extensions, it would go beyond that to the, whatever the lease A couple other things just for considerations. First of all, there will be no fee allowed in this, in the agreement for a management fee, just to kind of cover the, you know, oftentimes in property management, you will take a fee based on revenue. So it is actual expenses to, to operate the, the garage is what will go and be reimbursed as part of the fund. Again, I mentioned earlier establishes the ability for dynamic pricing model and we believe this is the way that can best maximize the, um, the revenue opportunity. It requires the, as I said earlier, to be managed in a manner that is consistent with our existing parking agreements. And it puts in the restrictions that we cannot compete with the stadium events, um, and that that has to be incorporated in there. Again, this is similar to the prior discussion. This is the, you know, the area where the garage will be located. Again, here are some, uh, some of the similar slides you saw before. And, um, and with that, uh, there's the, the pedestrian overpass and I would be glad to answer any questions that you have.
See and none.
Well, congratulations. You don't have to listen to me now. So now some of the really exciting noise, uh, news on this project is we're going to give you the updated, uh, information from applied economics on the impact of the Vi Resort. And, uh, just to kind of set the table a little bit, if you recall, the city before entering into the agreements with the Vi Resort back in 2020, required a economic impact study to be done. So we hired Applied Economics and Sarah Marley to look at that development and estimate to the council what our new tax revenues would be once the resort is operationalized and fully open. And that number came in, uh, just under $10 million. We have very exciting news. We've updated the numbers. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Jessie and she'll walk you through these numbers.
Okay, before you do, Ms. Bauer, you do your portion and?
Vi Resort Economic Impact Analysis.
Okay, Jessie.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin Phelps, and thank you, Mayor and Council. So I am excited to be here to share this information. We've been working with, uh, the owners of the Vi Resort for quite some time to get their information that was necessary to be able to provide these updated numbers today. So as Mr. Phelps mentioned, the initial economic impact study was conducted by Applied Economics in 2020. I think it's important for us to look at what that original scope of the project was. Um, and that included 630 hotel rooms, an 11-acre lagoon, um, just over 130,000 square feet of office, just over 263,000 square feet of retail and restaurant, um, as well as 75,000 square feet of a family entertainment center. So the total revenue impact that had been estimated for that original scope you'll see there was 700,000 or 700 million dollars over 25 years to all taxing jurisdictions. So to break that down specific to the city over that same 25-year period, that would have been 240 million or as Mr. Phelps mentioned, about 9.6 million annually. So the scope of this project has significantly grown, um, in the magnitude of the resort. And you'll see here on the screen, we are now, the new study was based on, uh, that one, 1,083 hotel rooms. Those are four luxury hotels, so that also matters relative to the, uh, revenue impacts. 171,000 square feet of generally high-end retail and restaurants, 571,000 square feet of attractions, entertainment amenities, including a nightclub, a multi-level concert venue, and the nine-acre Mattel Adventure Park. That's a five-acre swimming area with beaches and related amenities, 55,000 square feet of corporate office that will be occupied by the owner and developer, as well as the 70,000 square feet of convention space. So that is the scope of the project that was used for this updated impact study that Applied Economics has done for us. So what we did when we updated this study was took into account the incentives first that were provided by the city. So as a reminder, the city did offer a permit and plan review fee waiver of up to a million dollars, as well as a 25-year government property lease excise tax agreement on the entertainment, recreation, and concession portions of the development as dictated by state statute. You'll see noted on the slide that the total of the incentives is estimated at 107 million dollars, but it's also important to note in the study that those G-plat portions of this project are not definitive and are only based on assumptions about specific portions of the development that may qualify. So taking that, the incentive portion into account, this project is estimated to result in 2.2 billion dollars in new sales, property, and bed tax revenues to the city, county, and state over the next 25 years. So to break that down specifically into what that revenue impact is for the city, there you'll see on the slide, 811.7 million dollars over 25 years or 32.4 million annually. In the original study, Applied Economics also provided us two-site development alternatives for comparison and we felt it was important to do the same again for context. So understanding that this 49-acre site could have developed into multiple different things, you'll see on the screen, two scenarios. The first scenario was a mixed development of multifamily and retail, and then the second was a multifamily and office development. We contemplated both of these and as you can see, based on how those would have developed and what the city could have received in estimated revenues over that same 25-year period, multifamily and retail would have been 71.2 million over those 25 years and multifamily and office would have been 17.7 million. Again, noting that this particular project, the Vi Resort, is 811.7 million. And finally, on this slide, we can see the annual revenue impacts specifically to the school district. So this is the property tax that would be generated. The table on the slide clearly outlines the total tax collections of the property in its current condition, which is under construction. And it also shows what those impacts would have been of those two alternatives we just looked at. And then it shows the substantial estimated revenues far greater for the Vi Resort, taking into account the value of the incentive. And again, you can see here that the estimated annual increase in property tax revenues to the schools is 6.2 million dollars and 7.9 to all jurisdictions. And doing, just looking at the delta there, you can see specifically with the schools, even for the highest that you would have received from any other alternative on the screen, it's nearly $5 million more annually. So again, in summary, you'll see on the slide, the original impact from that 2020 study and with the growth of this project, the estimated return has more than tripled. And these figures, I think it's really important, it is unbold on this slide, these figures do not include the estimated impact of the parking garage revenues that Mr. Phelps just shared in the previous presentation. So the project is expected to open in two phases, with the first phase opening end of 2024 and the second phase opening in summer of 2025. And in closing, I do want to acknowledge that this analysis is a conservative approach based on the current site plan from Vi Resort. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions about this.
Question.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Peterson, so I'm looking at the other, uh, actual study that you provide us, provided us on, on, I'm sorry, they're not pages, page three, there it is. Um, the, it lists the, the, I'm assuming the nightly rate, um, of the hotels and so it's building one, 564, building two, 783, building six, 398, and building eight, five, 664. Um, I mean, for me personally, I feel like those are high, but, so I just want to understand though, is this a blended peak, off-peak rate or is this the high season rate? Because we all know what good deals you can get on hotels here in the summertime, so what do these numbers represent?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, I appreciate the question and it's important to understand that the inputs that were used for this study were provided directly by the developer and owner. And what their ask was, was to utilize their averages and that's generally how we would use for assumptions. So those would be considered averages. And then what is also very important to acknowledge, as we mentioned on the slide, they are considered luxury hotel rates and those are luxury hotel rooms.
I'm sorry, could you say that again? You were talking a little too fast for me.
Sorry, they're luxury hotels and so that's why you're seeing such a high rate that's an average. And then the occupancy associated with it actually correlates directly to that, which is a quite conservative approach. So it is an average rate that they've provided as a, as their baseline for what they believe their nightly rate will be.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I, I want to maybe address that a little bit more because I looked at these numbers as well. And when, when Jessie mentioned that this was a, you know, we think a relatively conservative estimation, I would really want to call out the, if you look to the right of the lease rate, you see what their model is for occupancy. So you see that on building one, it's, they're, they're projecting roughly in the hotel, uh, 45% of their 200 and, um, 299 rooms. So if you kind of go down, you know, down the list, you'll see, um, of all the hotels that the, like building six, 42%. Uh, building eight, which is their main hotel, it's 66. Currently, if we look at the occupancy rate for all hotels within the entertainment district, um, I, Jessie, maybe make sure I'm, I think last numbers I saw, we were all north of about 72 to 73%.
That's correct.
For the entire area. So I think that, you know, the fact that they're only showing 40% occupancy will probably will probably reflect that not everybody can afford a three hundred and fifty or a five hundred dollar a night room. But those numbers are consistent if you, if you look at the non-summertime rates for, you know, resort facilities like the Biltmore, Venetian, et cetera.
Mayor, do you have that data? I'd be interested to see like what the average rate is for like the Biltmore, the Princess, the Venetian, maybe Royal Palm, some of the more high-end, which is I think that what they're, what they're believing their competition's going to be, so that I would be able to look at those average rates and see how these compare.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, we could certainly provide that information.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to follow-up question to that. Somebody rents a room, happens to be a concert night, at that higher rate, do they get to watch the concert with that room?
Mayor, that, that is part of the incentive and part of the package. And so what Vi Resort is looking at in their model is a variety of different ways that people will get to experience the entertainment.
Which, which is difficult to compare to any other hotels in, in the valley because nobody else offers that. So it, it's something else. I understand your concern. It seems awful high, but if there's a concert involved, then maybe not.
Mayor, may, if I may, because when I, when I toured Vi, what I was, what we were told, and maybe that's changed since then, it was, I think, one of the hottest days of the year was that the, on concert days, they're going to be charging by the person. Like you can't rent a room and bring five of your friends in there. There's going to be a fee for every single, what we were told was it would be like six people would be six thousand dollars and they would be providing, if you have a room where you can view the concert. So there's different, I think there's, this doesn't include that, I don't think, or I haven't seen it yet, but that, that you can't rent a room for, what's the highest average rate on here, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars a night and then bring your friends in there all for that price. That's not how that's going to work, at least that's how it was explained to us.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, I'd be reluctant to talk too much about their business model relative to this study. And so that is ultimately why we acknowledge that this is a conservative approach based on the data that they've provided us about how their site plan is.
Okay, but clearly, clearly you're not going to be able to bring, you know, for a hundred and twenty bucks each and be able to have a room and watch the concert from there. They've got a, they've got a model for that where every person in there is going to have to have a price of admission essentially.
Yeah, and Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, that's why we expect what we see here relative to the, the revenue impact could be even greater based on how they end up operating once fully operational.
So Mayor, if I could, is that not included, the, the event days, is not, you know, like the, that's not, that, this, these numbers don't include that then, is that what you're saying?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, what they've currently provided, that Vi Resort has provided us, are their development assumptions based on some very conservative numbers of approximately how much, for instance, they believe, you know, to be spent per square foot in, say, their restaurants, for concerts, for ticket sales. All of that gets built in. And again, that's a conservative approach on their behalf to be able to put a study together at this stage while they're still in their construction.
Okay, yeah, because I didn't see it on, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I too would caution us in getting comparable costs in other resorts. You won't get what this resort is offering you by way of amenities, even if you have to pay separate for the concert, you don't have to go far, it's there. And so to be able to, to, to check out a room and it's going to cost you significantly more than others, but you have the amenities there, you have the amusement park, you have the retail there, you have the restaurants there, there's a nightclub there, and there's a few other things that are proposed to be there. I just caution us when we bring back a really low rate, but that it doesn't have the amenities that this resort does. So if you bring that back, and it sounds like you are, maybe bring back what they offer in there as amenities as opposed to this one here. There's no comparison at all.
Mr. Melner.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of general comments on the project overall. I mean, looking at it from a financial point of view, a significantly and very positive internal rate of return for the investment, time and energy that we put into this project. And to go back to the prior project, the garage, a, a, a return in five point seven five years of our investment for what we put into the garage, we get that entire amount back in five point seven five years. Pretty significant internal rate of return for what we are investing in this project. And even with the giblet, a significant return on, on our investment. So thanks to staff for all the work and, and effort and to the, the Vi Resort for coming to Glendale and making this happen here. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor next.
Thank you, Mayor. As I have said repeatedly, Vi Resort has the potential to be the most impactful project that has ever come to Glendale. With the new study and the new numbers returning approximately thirty-two million annually to the city as opposed to the old numbers, that is a significant, significant amount of revenue that most people don't realize will not only go toward operating expenses. For example, the city will be losing approximately fourteen million a year in the loss of rental revenue. This goes a long way toward covering that shortfall that has been mandated upon every city in Glendale. But it also allows us some breathing room to advocate and, and create other projects that will benefit the citizens of Glendale. I, I think this is a win-win for everyone and I couldn't be happier to see this project move forward and I can't wait till it opens. Thank you.
Before we adjourn the meeting, I was just sitting here thinking how delighted that I was and I think everybody here, when we had a furniture company that was going to open in Glendale, they, they chose Glendale in North America. And if I remember right, that was a whopping two million dollars a year that we were looking at as revenue. And now we're looking at thirty million more annually? Just mind-boggling. It's a, it's amazing on how when things go wrong, they can go so right. Mr. Phelps, your entire team, thank you for everything you guys have done. There's no other questions or comments, we'll go ahead and finish this meeting up. We do have an executive meeting immediately following that. So get back to script here. Okay, city managers report. Mr. Phelps? Anything? No? City Attorney?
No, no, thank you.
Any counsel, Adam, special interest? Mr. Aldama?
Yeah, I have a, I have a really simple one. Recently, I attended an event where four council members were at and I, I looked and there was no posting for a quorum. I did report it to the clerk and to the city attorney. What I'm asking is that it's really easy to, that is really easily happens when we're out and about. I know that there's a mechanism already in place. I'm asking the city manager to work with the city clerk and maybe with our assistants to ensure that quorums are posted when the council's out at events. Thank you.
Mr. Hugh? Councilmember Melner?
Nothing, Dave, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachov?
Yes, Mayor, I do have one today. This is something that I have been kind of pondering and I discussed it with Mr. Bailey at our last monthly meeting. And I'd like to have staff explore the possibility of having a separate ordinance for repeat offenders for code, where it's a completely, because that's really what our issue is, is these repeat offenders, it's a new violation, it's a new, but it's the same address, over and over and over again, it's the same address. So I'd like to take a look at a special, whatever, I don't want to say punishment, but a special set of, of things that engage when somebody's obviously a repeat offender, possibly, and I want to bring it up now and not wait, because it possibly could involve another FTE for the prosecutor's office, because I know prosecutors are busy prosecuting other, other things. And ideally, at least, I would like to see it taken, a repeat offender taken out of code where there's no more ability to just kind of let it go or, but now it's gone to a prosecutor where there's actually going to be action taken. So it would involve different penalties and everything for somebody who's an obvious repeat. We've seen these emails coming in from us and I'm sure we all know at least quite a few of who, the addresses that are repeat offenders. And I think we owe it to our residents to protect their property, protect their quality of life, the values of their neighborhood, and not allow these repeat offenders to have, you know, a different violation every week and, and there's no path to actually really addressing this issue. So I'd like the staff to bring that back and have a discussion about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Turner?
Not today, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, and the only thing I'd like to add is I, I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving. It's a, you know, it's that one time of year where we're supposed to just take that moment and reflect on the blessings that we truly have. We tend to forget about that too often. Everybody gets busy, but we all have incredible blessings in, in, in certain ways. So keep, keep, keep your family in mind, keep, keep our soldiers or airmen, people that are overseas protecting our freedoms in mind. With that, can I get a motion to go into executive session? Go move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, vote nay. Here's, I do have it, we're going to exec, council meetings recessed.